So you know before it comes up, we won't be streaming live except on YouTube tonight. Uh, they can see it later.
Today. Call me to order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Burden.
Here.
Ewert. Finner.
Here.
Parton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Nice indication given by Pastor Elizabeth Cummings.
Nope. Ah, the Lord be with you. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this city and for this council. We ask you to send your spirit to be among them this evening as they discuss the business of our city. Send your spirit to be with them and give them good insight into the decisions that they have to make and in the conversations that they have, the discussions that they have. Look after each and every one of our city employees. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start tonight with the presentation for the minutes, say minutes of September 10, 2018. Mr. Bear?
Motion to accept the minutes of the September 10, 2018 business meeting is published.
Second.
Most second to approve the minutes for September 10, 2018. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
abstained.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one, citizens to be heard. A was the Centric County Fire Department. They are not here, so if they do show, we'll get their report from them.
We got the report?
Yeah, we have a report from them already, so they won't be here to give it, it looks like then. Item two, approval of licensed bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance resolutions, there's none. Item four, notice and communications, a governing body announcements. Anybody? Mr. Crum?
If I get my phone, get my... Pick it up here. Hey, that's better. Uh, at the library, just a reminder, they do have story time on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:30. And upcoming events, uh, the 27th, at seven o'clock, there's a library, a library board meeting. On the 29th, at 10:30, is the next Meeple Mayhem, that's where they get together and play together, they play, uh, different games together, including board games and stuff that maybe aren't normal things that you'd see, uh, played like at family game nights and stuff like that, stuff that's a little bit more unique. And then on the 29th also, at 6:30, friends in the library will be having their potluck supper. Stuff going on in the school district, uh, football team, uh, won homecoming last Friday. I think the parade went really well, the weather was about perfect for it. Soccer team won a game last week, uh, volleyball team had a tournament at campus this week that went really well. And cross-country, I think, went and ran at Rim Rock, which is in lawns, one of the toughest courses in the end, a bunch of kids that ran really well. And band did fantastic in the parade like they normally do. Just kinda stuff going on in the district and at the library. That's all I have.
I do have, again, the senior center, that center announcements. The mobile farmer's market Tuesday, September 25th at noon. You don't have to be a senior to shop at the market. There's a movie matinee, Seven Pounds of Wendy's, September 26th at 12:30. Bring a friend. Senior Expo, Thursday, September 27th, from nine to three, at Britannica, the art museum and the new Wichita Library. Cheer yoga, Monday, October 1st, at 10:00 a.m. Resistance band training, October 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. And Bible study, Friday, October 5th, at 1:00 p.m. So if you need something to do, the senior center has a lot of activities. With that, we'll then on move to item B, which is the letter from WAMPO regarding the North Main Street project award. WAMPO is Wichita area metal problem planning organization. The letter shows that, uh, we've been approved for $1,743,664. This will be for the, uh, total redoing of Main Street from the bridge all the way to the corner. There'll be, uh, additional, uh, crosswalks and additional sidewalks on the west side of the street. This funding really won't take place until about 21, I think, is what it's set for. So we'll continue to have to work on it for a while and then the funding will be, we'll totally redo Main Street out there. Glad to get that funding from them at this point. Item C, there's a letter from Wayne and Dorothy Holt about the new pads that were put up in the, uh, activity center. Item five, old business, nothing. Item six, other business consideration agreement for design services with the William Morris Agent Architects. This is the, uh, agreement that we are looking at to go ahead and build the chapel that the historic, uh, district had requested. Didn't work out when we tried to move one in, the council, um, said that they would make sure they worked with the historic to get a, um, chapel in the area. So we've gone out for bids to get the drawings to be able to, uh, build the chapel over there. The chapel will be, um, in the same as the Methodist church that was originally there. So, um, we've got bids from, anywhere from the low bid of the William Morris of 23,946 all the way up to WDM Architects for 74,500 is a bid. Plus they had other things that increased it even above that. So the lowest bid was the William Morris Associates for the services of designing and helping with the bidding for the chapel in the historic district. We can answer any questions you may have. If not, then we would... Mr. Crum?
One of it, we're talking about the original layout that it was set up, right?
Yes, original Methodist church, uh-huh.
Was the one that was there when the tornado came through, was that the original one?
Yes.
Have we considered, if I remember right, that's a pretty large building.
We won't be building it to that size, we'll be building it more of a chapel size.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
The bid shows for 1,200 square feet, I think, if I remember right, is what the building will be. So it'll be a smaller, uh, of what that was, replica of that building.
Okay. That was one thing I was concerned.
Mr. Kessler?
This is just to, uh, just for the plans, right? Plans and to help go out and request bids.
Yes.
For the construction?
They'll do all the, uh, plans, electrical, uh, all the way through and drawings so that we can take those to contractors and get bids. They will then, uh, put out the bids so we can see what the bids come in at that point. So there'll be a, a bidding once all the plans are done. So we'll know more, uh, after everything is done, uh, what it will cost us to build the chapel. They, they think they might be able to also have a testament for us once they got the plans done also. So this company, uh, has done a lot of different, um, historic buildings. They've done the, I think, just finished the depot in Augusta right now, I think, as far as the historic that they've done at this point. So they kinda specialize in historic buildings.
What kind of timeframe? Do we know?
The NAI contract that we have, which is what we'll need to approve, is that the contract says, I think it's a total of eight months from the signing of this contract to be done, built and built, finished.
We looked at the eight months and then we bumped it to 14 months.
Because we wanted to make sure, we had any weather, we can get the whole thing done at that point. Mr. Crum?
Where would we be getting the, basically $24,000 for this portion? And then where would we be getting the money to?
This comes out of capital improvement.
Okay, and then what about, when we gotta build, is that something we may have to bond? Would it have to wait until that's gonna be here?
Hopefully it comes in not much more than what our previous was on building, moving the other building in, with remodel and so on and so forth. So, uh, there's amp funds right now in your capital improvements to pay for as long as it doesn't come in, in excess, let's say that. Hopefully it'll come in in that 100, 120 range to build the whole thing.
Okay, and then along with the bid we have in here, we also have some amendments that need to be made. So if we gotta make this motion, we need to do the amount and to include the amendments that are added to it.
We actually wanna approve the NAI contract that you have before you're in there. In that contract, it actually states what the 23,946 is and the company, so if you approve that NAI contract, that takes care of everything.
Even those amendments that are on separate piece of paper?
Yes, you don't, yeah, because those are, those become part of the contract.
Okay. Well, if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the contract as presented, for this early project for $23,946.
Second.
Most second to approve the contract for the design services with Morris Agency, the NAI contract plus the additions. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item two is the consideration of the mill and overlay projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mimosa Drive was called out for a mill and overlay in the annual street survey presented to you at the end of March. We have received bids for asphalt, uh, milling and overlay of Mimosa Drive and the north and, north and west parking lot here at City Hall. The budgeted price for Mimosa was 86,660. City Hall was budgeted at 30,000. I've included a bid tab which details a low bid price of $40,005 for Mimosa Drive and $34,994.70 for the City Hall parking lot. Alternate one on the bid tab is to address any base repair that may be needed. Due to the low bid received, staff looked at our recent slurry seal project and our pavement rating system. Based on that information, Ballard Drive and Slade Avenue were selected to be added to this project via change order. Flint Hills Materials was the low bidder for a total project cost of 132,338.97. The street projects will be paid out of the street sales tax and the City Hall parking lot is a budgeted item and will be paid out of buildings and grounds. I've also included a map in your packet and I can answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Crum?
It's probably been six months since I've driven all the way down Ballard. The last time I went down Ballard, it was a lot like a roller coaster ride.
Hasn't changed, no.
Is this gonna, I mean, the way, I guess the way I'm reading this, I'm afraid this is just a resurface. Are we gonna, is it gonna fix the?
We spoke with the contractor and engineers and they've all said that this would be a benefit to this road other than a total reconstruction.
It'll take the, the waves out though.
Right. And then it may require some base repair in spots, but overall, we, we melt, we did a bore on the street and the asphalt is six inches thick, which usually helps on a overlay. Because they only get down two inches and the rest of it will be the new, new and old asphalt.
So really, the only way to really fix that street, if needed to, we'd have to replace the whole thing, but we're hoping this will take care of the majority of the problems.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions, Council? Mr. Per?
I make a motion, we accept the bid from Flint Hills Materials for one of them, $32,338.97 for the milling and overlay.
Second.
Most second to approve the contract or the bids as presented for the mill and overlay. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Can I back up on you a little bit, because I had failed to go over something in the announcement after we finished the other... Next meeting, uh, we are going to need to have a public hearing. And the public hearing will be for the, uh, application for a CDPG, which is a community development block rack. Uh, as we know, we've got the properties of the streets and drainage done in, um, the Dirk District. This one is for the Sunset Fields District. Sunset Fields, as we know, is, roads are really all gravel over there and always been a real problem as far as any drainage and road that's there. That area qualifies because of the qualifications of income and qualifications for a CDPG. It qualifies for $336,000 of the CDPG money that we would be able to use over there. We have to have a public hearing for that, uh, as part of the application process. So next, uh, meeting, uh, we'll have that public hearing, uh, to talk about the approval of the, uh, $336,000 CDPG project. So it looks like, hopefully we can get that, we can get the, the streets. Again, there's money we're gonna have to put in it also, and we did in the other one. But I would sure not like to lose 336,000 money, $1,000 from the state over there. We can sure improve the Sunset Fields without those people having to put that money in there over there or without us having to put it either one. So, next meeting, look for that public hearing notice, uh, on your agenda.
Is that the public hearing?
Looked through the, uh, application process, we don't actually have to set one, we just have to have one.
Okay.
So, um, we wouldn't need to do anything tonight then. Okay, we'll go back down, item C, consideration of purchase of exercise equipment.
Meeting Mayor and Council, this time of year, we always evaluate our cardio and strength equipment, look at what we need to upgrade and replace. You have in your packet, there is three pieces of strength equipment and two new ellipticals that we would like to purchase. These would be purchased from Midstates Fitness, this is who surfaces our equipment and is a local dealer for pre-core. Everything else, we'd have to purchase from a dealer out of state. So these would be paid for out of our recreation sales tax. I'm looking for approval for $22,810. Can I answer any other questions you might have on this?
Mr. Crum?
The trade-in on the old machines for $1,000, is that the easiest way to go on that? Is that about how much money we'd get if we tried to sell them outright? Would we make less than that, maybe make more?
Um, we've sold some older ones that we got, I think, $250, $300 from, trading them in. It's kinda, they come in and take them and take them from us, so.
So it's reasonable trade-in value? Okay.
They're up there in mileage, um, if you notice in the packet, the one has 17,000 miles, the other one has 19,000.
Miles on them.
I converted it for ya. It was strides, but I converted it to miles from the back end.
Maybe you enjoyed that?
Mr. Per?
I make a motion, we accept the bid for $22,810 from Midstates Fitness for the exercise equipment.
Second.
Most second to approve the bid from Midstates for the equipment. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move then to the consideration of council room and channel seven upgrade, which kinda looks like tonight would've been better to have already had it done. So, and we know we've had, um, questions before from people not being able to hear very well and it looks like now they can't even see us. So, uh, this will upgrade so that we can get everything better so that we can have the audience to be able to know what's going on better. So this is any question you might have that I can't answer or that, um, Will can answer, we'll have Chris come out and, and cover those for us. Mr. Bear?
Does this upgrade, does this include sound reinforcement for this room? Or is this?
Getting the speakers to put volume out?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't want the audience to hear what we're saying. Mr. Crum?
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm glad to see us do this, because I think this is, honestly, it's important for transparency too. People trying to watch us and they can get on the YouTube channel, be used for me to hear that as well, so. I go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, the contract or, or the bids from B, from B and H and Conference Technologies, uh, not to exceed $31,700.
Second.
Most second to approve the upgrades at $31,700. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bond AME, which is consideration temporary special events, permit application for cornhole classics at the O6O Sports. As you see, this application is coming from Eric Capital Cornhole Classics. It will be, uh, taking place at O6O Sports. And the reason it's coming to us is because we still own the building and we lease the building to O6O Sports and they are having Eric Rico from Eric Capital Cornhole Classics put the term on for them. So we have to approve the ability to use the, uh, the alcohol there in that building since we still own it. Questions? Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion, we approve the temporary special, uh, then permit an application for the cornhole classic at the O6O Sports. Second.
Most second to approve the temporary permit for Eric Capital Cornhole Classics. Discussion? Mr. Crum?
I know where these built, this built, I'm curious, um, because they also have a junior tournament going on same time. What kind of, is the alcohol's gonna be sold or it's just gonna be allowed?
We've got Mr. Rico with us and he'll be able to answer those for you.
We won't be selling it, we'll just be allowing people to bring it in for themselves.
Okay, and you, we have any security there as well?
Um, just Kyle and Lindsay and myself and my wife will just be keeping an eye on everything and making sure people don't take it out of parking lots and places that it doesn't need to be. Any alcohol, does it go onto the cornhole courts or anything? So it stays in designated areas.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bear?
So should the, should the owner operator of O6O Sports, should their name be on this application as well?
Bill?
We've always had the organizers of the event do it and I know with communications with the owners, they're on board with doing it, so.
And I, and I saw in the sketch, uh, there were three options of the areas within the facility where the alcohol was going to be. Are you gonna use all three of them or one of them?
Generally, we'll probably do either one, uh, on the basketball court if we're playing outdoors. We were, I was talking to Kyle today. It would be nice if we could do, if we played outside, uh, we have alcohol out there. And then also in the, what do they call it, the party room, uh, which was the option three. And also, if we do it indoors, we'll just have it kind of in that little spectator area, um, in front of the turf. And if we could, also in the party room.
Well, I guess this question kinda goes to what Mr. Crum was asking. Is there, does there need to be a necessary separation between alcohol areas and areas where there are underage? Or does, or does that matter in this case? I'm just, I'm gonna question it.
Well, you're true, you're only talking about one option, you're not looking at all three options, are you?
I guess it's really kind of a, if, if we're doing it indoor versus outdoor, those are, if we're outdoor, it would mostly be on the courts and.
And that's because of weather permitting?
Yeah, yeah, if it's rainy or really.
So if it's rainy, you're going to be inside, if it's not rainy, you're gonna be outside?
Um, if it's extra windy, we'll probably be inside also.
Not outside at all?
Uh, not playing cornhole. I might, I was thinking about setting up other, just kind of side games outside for people to play. But if, if we're not out there playing, uh, cornhole, then they probably won't have their alcohol out there.
But either way, you're talking about if you're outside, you're gonna have it around the basketball court and then also in the party room. So you're gonna have at least two spots?
Yeah.
Either way?
Yeah.
Other questions, Council or? I'm not sure, maybe we do have a motion in a second, we're in discussion.
One of the question I had was, uh, there's insurance that's supposed to be provided for events like this. Is that, are you gonna be providing that insurance or is the owner of O6O Sports providing it?
Uh, I would believe that it would be the owners of O6O Sports. I, we haven't really quite discussed that. I'm not providing any insurance, so I would believe it would be under O6O Sports, but I can't say for sure.
Do those things need to be decided before we issue a permit?
They, you can make it, uh, you can make the approval depending on whether the insurance is in place or not. Insurance is not in place, then your permit is no good.
That's to be automatic anyway, right?
Right, yeah, they have to have insurance.
Well, it says right here, it says insurance, it says permit, you shall, uh, shall furnish a certified insurance, so.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because it seems to me there are three parties involved here.
Right.
The public, we own the property.
Right.
We lease it to one individual and another individual is going to have a, an, an event there. So I, I think that we should, I think we should have it clearly defined where the alcohol is going to be and is not going to be. We require that for everything else. And I think we need to clarify who's providing the insurance certificate. I, and that's, I think that's what our, our special event permits always require of anyone, so. Right now, it's a little unclear to me, so.
We're still in discussion, we have a second, a, a motion and second to approve. No other, um, discussion, I'm gonna call the, the question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
No.
Finner?
No.
Parton?
No.
Crum?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Okay. Mr. Rico, the, it was turned down basically what you was. And that's because you truly weren't definite as to where for sure you were going to have it.
Okay.
And you also weren't definite on who's gonna be providing the insurance that's there.
Okay.
So if you wanna get with O6O Sports, uh, and then get back with us.
Okay.
Then we can bring it back to.
Tournaments, sorry.
Mr. Crum? That's the way it comes down timewise as far as getting it done at this point.
Whenever we have events like this too, I'd also, I don't know if it's something we need to add to the application or something, but I wanna make, find out a way to make sure that we have somebody there that's watching to make sure that there's no underage drinking involved as well. Because not gonna have any security, you're just gonna have four people walking around, you've got an underage tournament going on as well. Those designated areas need to be figured out some way, they're blocked off to make sure that nobody that's underage gets in those areas. My opinion.
Well, I bet you got the other deals that have the baby shower and things like that. Are you gonna make them have security too?
Those are a much more confined area, I guess, I'm more comfortable with that.
Well, they say, they actually have to, to redefine, there has to be a fence or something put up for these areas to keep the people confined. So if they were, if it was to happen on the basketball court, around the edges, they truly have to have a fence up to keep people in there. That's, that keeps people getting it out.
Correct.
So, but at this point, uh, Council's turned it down at this point. Then on, move on to the, which is consideration of temporary special events permit application for a classroom reunion at the Lions Club Shelter.
I spoke with the applicant on this one, it is for that classroom reunion and I told him that they would have to keep the alcohol within the Lions Club Shelter.
And they've got their insurance, right?
I don't have a copy of it at this time, I'll give it.
Right at this time. Questions, Counselor, would like to do with this one? Mr. Kessler?
Is there, is there normally like a map? I know you, you said, you explained to them, but.
And when we've had them, can...
And when we've had them contained inside the facility, we haven't had, haven't always had a map, because it clearly identifies the area, and we know that in the Lions Shelter. The shelter is open air, there was a... Lions Club Shelter. It cost the building.
Yeah, just inside the Lions Club Shelter. Ms. Ritter?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to accept the temporary permit for the classroom union inside the Lions Club.
Within per...
Within the primary of the Lions Club.
And to furnish insurance?
And, yeah, and to furnish proof of insurance.
I'll second that one.
Most second to approve the temporary special events permit application with the having it only in the shelter and insurance be provided before the permit's issued. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Then on to item seven, Department of Parks, A Administrative Services.
Does that have a couple announcements? Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Council. This Friday, we have the WSU, WSU Tech ribbon cutting from four to six. Please come out, speakers, I believe start around four fifteen. Should be a pretty quick turnaround on that, and then they'll be offering tours, refreshments, and doing drawings for prizes. And then on Saturday, we have, excuse me, our last cruising day. They've been going over very well, good attendance, we'll have food trucks, live music, I believe the Romero Project will be performing. That's kind of loosely done five to ten, it's a, it's a cruising, nobody's held there, they're coming out there on their own will, it's not an actual car show, again, just a cruising, so I hope to see you out there at both events, thanks.
See you, Corinne.
Hey, our next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October the ninth, instead of Monday. City offices will be closed on Monday, the eighth, for the holiday.
And I see police chief.
How are you doing, Mayor and Council? As always, we'll be open for the holiday, so if you need to, certainly call the police, and we'll be here. Also, our visiting officer this evening is Officer Casey McCoy. He is currently assigned to our second shift, which is three PM to eleven PM, so say hi to him as you go by out there, and that's all I've got, thanks.
I am D, how it works?
I have a schedule here for the mill and overlay projects that you guys approved tonight. It's a TIV schedule based on weather, of course. Mimosa Drive is scheduled for October eighth and October ninth. Slay Drive is forecasted for October tenth and eleventh. Ballard Drive will be October twelfth through the fifteenth, and City Hall parking lot will be October sixteenth through the eighteenth. During that time of City Hall, the drive-through is also getting milled and overlaid, so it will be closed for a small portion of that. The contractor will distribute door hangers to any properties in the area forty hours in advance. During the milling process, the property owners will be able to get through using caution. During the paving of the road, the road will be closed from eight AM to three PM. Also, we have our slurry sill project starting September twenty-eighth, with an expected completion of October ninth, weather dependent, of course. This Wednesday, we will release a detailed schedule provided by the contractor that will have the dates, specific dates for the streets that are being slurried sill, and as with the mill and overlay project, they'll be doing door hangers for the affected area as well. Ms. Bitter, question?
Tony, when they're doing the milling, like what you've been describing in this project, they mill about, would you say, an inch or two deep?
Two inches.
Two inches deep? What happens to all that milling that they, that they cut up? Do they mix that on the spot? Do we get to keep that?
Yeah, we keep that, the contract calls for us to keep the millings, we have uses for that.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Cram?
The times that the roads will be go, will be closed, we share those with the transportation department for the schools.
Yes, I've done that last week.
Okay.
And also, I'll be posting all these, when I get more definitive times on the slurry sill on Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Recreation, Bertie.
My list is long, so I'm gonna apologize now, so. This Thursday is our last Thursday food truck. We will have Ken and Barbie here from eleven to one, so if you wanna come down, I think it's cheesy fries that are pretty popular from them. But Friday, we will have park boards moving in the park. Seven fifteen, they will be showing game plans, so you can bring blankets and chairs. Bug spray is probably gonna be needed lightly with all the rain. Monday, the splashback will be closing for the season. We will also be starting construction for the park over by the south of the Activity Center, so they'll be working on that for about two weeks, so it was gonna be, that area will be torn up. We have Gobble Wobble coming up, it's our annual five K, eight K. This will be Saturday, November third. Registration has begun for that, the race is at nine AM. This Saturday is our first price increase. We will also have Kris cakes at the Activity Center that day from nine to eleven-thirty. It's five dollars per person. Part of those proceeds do go to the USC two sixty-one education fund. And then lastly, we have started registration for youth gymnastics. It's three and nine-year-olds that will start in October. Also, youth basketball is going on, registration for first through sixth, practices for those beginning November, and then games in December. That's all that happened.
Thank you, Georgie. Out of eight appointments, we have none. Item nine, opportunist citizen to be heard. Anyone that would like to speak to Council now, is the time. Seeing no one come forward, item ten, exact session, we have nothing. Item eleven, bills be paid, A bills be paid for the last half of September. Ms. Rutter?
Make a motion, pay the bills for the last half of September.
Second.
Most second, pay the bills last half of September. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item twelve, consent agenda, we have nothing. Item thirteen, council items, A council concerns, council. Any concerns you have tonight? Mr. Kessler?
Do, I know we have, I know we have like several bicycles, I was saying, picking up bicycles. What are the guidelines and procedures for picking them up as far as, treat, pick them up out of a public, public areas? Do you pick them up out of private areas also, if they're on a corner, or in a driveway, or something like that?
If they're on private property, we don't pick them up unless we're called by the property owner to come out and pick those up. Normally, those will be just a found property case, like any other found property that they found that wasn't theirs, they'd call us, we'd come and take care of it and pick it up. Public places like the parks, if we find a bicycle out there that nobody's around, we will pick them up, bring them down, secure them down here at the police department, and hope that somebody comes in and claims them. Periodically, we do go through and take the bicycles that we have, we publish in the paper to show that, the list of bicycles that we have. If anybody's missing one, obviously, they can check that list, they can come down to the police department at any time, come to our window over there, the communications window, and ask for an officer to go out and check for their bike, and they're welcome to come down and look anytime to see if their bicycle's out there, if they're missing one. Obviously, best thing to do would be to make a police report if you are missing a bicycle. That way, when we do find it, or if we do find it, or if they come down and see it back here, we have some proof of ownership there, because normally, we like to find some kind of proof of ownership to prove that they actually own the bicycle, and we're not just releasing property to somebody that doesn't own it. So, that's kind of how it works. And then, we have a project with the school district that we're working on now that's in the works, that we take the old bicycles, and we have a project going with them that we're, we're working on now, will be announced at a later date.
I know we have the pre, the pre-registration for bicycle license.
We do.
If they don't do it, do they need, I guess they do need the serial number to actually identify what bike is theirs?
If they had the serial number, that's best, if they have a receipt to show that they bought a certain kind of bike on a certain date or something like that, or, we've had people come down with pictures of their kids riding the bike, or their kid there with a bicycle, that's good proof of ownership for us, those kind of things. If they made a police report, and they described the bicycle, and they come down and say, I think that's my bike outside, and the bike matches the description, that's good enough for us, as long as they have that police report made.
I think a lot of people still don't realize, we have free licensing, bicycle licensing. I was gonna see if we can get that pushed out again, either at schools, or people sign up or drink up the water, or somewhere. Channel seven, I'll just get the information out there, so people know that they can come out and register their bicycles.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly put it on our social media and other avenues that we have there to encourage everybody to come down, because we don't charge anything for bicycle licenses, and we had one just this past weekend that we found one, then got it returned to the owner because it had a license on it, so, and that's definite proof of ownership in front of that.
Now, do you call them if they're registered, or you just make...
If we find one, we will call the number, the last number that's on the license, so, or if they come down and they, we can find them and do it that way.
Free, free locks, too, for if they register their bicycle license, you get a free lock with that license, too.
But you gotta use the lock.
Yeah.
You gotta lock it up. That might not gotten stubbled, huh?
That's right.
Mr. Cram, question?
Tony, this is for you. Notice the other day, no one's, before school starts, we remark the crosswalks. I noticed the other day that the crosswalk, it's not a school crosswalk over on Main Street, over by where the Main Street housing is and stuff like that, that paint's getting a little worn, we may wanna look at, re-stripping that, please.
I think, Tony, are you ordering the different process in now, or later?
In years past, we just basically painted our striping. We purchased a thermoplastic paint stripper, which will actually hopefully put on a much better, longer-lasting product, North Main, and we can paint it tomorrow, in three days, it'll be somewhat already faded, so. Contractors, we looked at contracting that, it's quite expensive to contract that out, so I think with this new thermoplastic thing that we'll be trying here in the near future, will hopefully give us a good product.
Okay. It'll be a lot brighter, basically, than even when painting it, is what it looks like.
Yeah.
Other items, Council? Seeing them, we'll go to B, which is council item request update, A nine oh six, car report.
Nine oh six car report, we had the vehicle and trailer parked in the street for more than two hours at a time. We did go by, we contacted the owner there, we didn't observe the vehicle parked in the street for more than two hours at a time. We have contacted the owner, though, made them aware of the ordinance. We didn't see any evidence of any kind of business going on at that house.